Be please join me in prayer. I do have the Father, we want to thank you for who you are to us, Lord. We thank you for the wonderful people of Gulf County. We thank you for this great, this great nation. We continue to pray for all our leaders in the United States of America. Father, we pray for our, our local leaders. Be with us this morning, be with this board, be with our families, Lord. Protect our first responders, protect and keep our military, Father, from any hurt, harm, endanger. Pray that we continue to, to work together as, as one, unity, Father. That's what we need in this country, unity, togetherness. We give you praise, we give you glory, we give you honor. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to all, welcome to the January twenty-third meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. I don't know if it's just me or this is my first meeting as the chairman, but I'm a little warm. It might just be a little nerves or something, I don't know. But I'm, I'm a little warm. Before we get started, I just want to take this time to say that I, I appreciate the opportunity to be the chairman here of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm gonna try to do my best to continue to bring unity and transparency, honesty, integrity, and character to the seat. I appreciate all of that Commissioner McDaniel. I want to thank him for his service of being the, the chairman. Since I've been on the board, the only thing I know of him as was, was chairman, so. That's probably all I'm gonna be calling Mr., Mr. Chairman. I'm looking forward to a great year, a great year in Gulf County. I'm excited. I'm, I'm excited about being the, uh, being the chairman, and I'm excited about where this board is going. I think we got a, a great group of guys, um, and the staff also makes, makes us look good. So I appreciate the staff, um, for what, what they do to make us, make our jobs. It's, it's tough, but they, they do help make our jobs a whole, a whole lot easier. Uh, before we, we, uh, start the meeting, uh, we got a presentation we want to present to Mr. McDaniel for, for all his, all his, his four years of being, being the chairman. Mr. McDaniel, you can step down to the front, and if any other commissioners want to say anything to Mr. McDaniel, we'll get you all guys to step down also to the front, and, uh, we got a special plaque for Mr. McDaniel. While, while they're working their way down, it, it reads Chairman, Chairman Thomas Ward McDaniel, for his exemplary service as chairman of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, from December, uh, from January two thousand thirteen to December two thousand seventeen.
Welcome. Truly say it's an honor to be the chair for years consecutive. I think that's probably the first time in Gulf County. Way that elections were around, had a lot of. Quinn here coming on you and hey, let's get seasoned a little bit. Good, heard that did season, you know? I haven't made a motion in four years. So I've got practice a little bit on that. But I want to thank, I want to thank all the people that supported me all over this county. And I have, I've been a county person, and I always try to help you, always slow to me. If I can't help you, I won't hurt you. Live by that and stuff. But anyway, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, board of members, thank you, staff.
I thank you to be.
All right, we appreciate that. First item of, of business today, this morning, is the consent agenda. Uh, this is where one vote covers, uh, multiple items in the consent, in the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Anyone in the audience? Questions or concern with the consent agenda? If none, is there any one of the staff members that have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Is there any board members that have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? If none, I entertain a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Rich. Any further board discussion? Motion passes five and oh. I'll be moving into county, county staff business. Mr. Butler, you up first?
Mr. Chairman, I have one item, one item at this time, I have a couple more items on down the list when we get down to those. My first one, I'll give you a copy of, of this. It's an MOA, it would be an MOA if you were to adopt this between Gulf County and Franklin County, to allow Franklin County to remove a derelict vessel that's on the west side of the Dakota River. We historically have not gone out and got DEP money and moved those vessels. Franklin County has, and this is for your consideration, I'm gonna give you a copy of what they gave me for your consideration. If this board agrees to it, when they meet their next meeting, then they will, they will agree to it.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, they came in after the consent agenda was set up, so we didn't have the opportunity to put it in the agenda, or in the consent agenda. But, in a nutshell, Franklin County, they have been doing, they've been removing old vessels that have sunk in, in the river system in the bay. Gulf County could have too, but they have seen like a lot more than we do, and they've been doing this over the years. They are willing to, to remove that vessel out of the Dakota River, which is on the Gulf, Gulf County side of the river. If you're okay with it, it's no cost to us, no cost to Gulf County. They will pick it up, it'd be, the cost would be borne between Franklin County and, and the state. So my recommendation is to allow them to do it, to agree to the MOA and let them move forward.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any board members got any, any questions on this issue? Anybody in the, in the public? I entertain a motion that we.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Macron.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. McDaniel. Any further board discussion? In opposition? Motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, that's all I have, this time I have a couple more items down the list.
Yes, sir. Hold on one second, Mr. Novak, I made my first, uh, chairman mistake, I guess. I actually was supposed to ask Ms. Marshall Player-Lindemann from the Florida Department of Health Department to come up first, along with Ms. Sarah Hines. They wanted to discuss some information about what's going on with the, uh, with the, the flu virus.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you. I'm Marshall Lindemann, the administrator for the Department of Health in Gulf and Franklin Counties. The number one job of the Department of Health, it's in statute, it's in our mission and our vision, is to protect the public health of the state of Florida. Uh, I personally am responsible for protecting the public health of Gulf County, and I feel compelled to come and speak to you today about the seriousness of the flu outbreak that Florida is experiencing right now, and quite frankly, Gulf County, uh, and to give you some tips on how to, uh, prevent that flu from affecting you or your family. We are seeing an increase in flu in the state of Florida, uh, and in Gulf County. We are seeing increased flu deaths in the state of Florida. We, yesterday, we reported our third pediatric death in the state of Florida. Those three children were not vaccinated children. In Gulf County, we're seeing, we are surveilling, uh, healthcare, the healthcare system almost daily. We're reporting twice a week to the state about the impact of the flu vaccine. Is it dead? Okay.
Nope.
That's good.
Um, we're surveilling the impact of the flu, uh, volumes in our community. Our medical clinics, our hospital ERs, our prison, our schools, all are seeing an increase in, in, um, flu cases right now. The state, it, the situation has reached such a point of being serious in the state that the state has activated what they call an incident management team. It meets each morning, and it reviews activities and surveillance reports around the state. We have very sophisticated surveillance tools in the state of Florida, and it, it's getting us very accurate data that we have a serious problem with flu in the state of Florida. We in Gulf County are sending up a bi-weekly report on availability of flu vaccines, availability of viral, antiviral medications, and, uh, flu volume activity in our healthcare providers. That's really all I want to say, I just want to impress upon you, it's very serious. And the last thing I want to say is, it's not too late to get your flu vaccine. It might not prevent you from getting the flu, but it is proven, absolutely clinically scientifically proven, that if you get a flu vaccine, it will lessen your risk of life-threatening effects from the flu, and it will shorten that illness. We learned something today, Sarah and I had a brief call this morning with the person in charge of surveillance for the state of Florida, and she gave us a piece of information that we hadn't seen before, so we'll push it out more often. If you get an annual vaccine, if you start your children and give them an annual flu vaccine, and you get an annual flu vaccine, that gives you long-term protection against the flu. It's cumulative, the protective, protective effect of that. So if that's not something you've considered before, consider now just getting an annual flu vaccine. Are there any questions for me about the flu, the flu vaccine?
Any board members?
Anybody, really. Michael?
Mr. Quigley says our entire building has had the flu. I think every commissioner and every staffer, uh, we all took the flu shot primarily, or ninety-five percent of us did. The rumor was out last week that, that they, they were changing the vaccine and that people were getting re-vaccinated. Does it help to have the second vaccine later in the year, or if you've taken it in November, you don't need to take it again?
Michael, that's a really great question, and so the answer is, if, if you're an adult and you've had a flu vaccine this season, you don't need another one. They don't change the flu vaccines mid-season. Honestly, the food, the flu vaccines, the, the production of flu vaccines start, gosh, almost a year before the season that they'll be produced, mass-produced, and the vaccinations will occur. If you are a child, your child's first flu vaccine, they need a second one to just solidify that first vaccination. But after that, just a single vaccine. And I'm gonna just go ahead, I was waiting for somebody to ask me about, I'm just gonna call it fake news, because I, I just wanted to have the chance to say that out loud, about ten percent, it only being ten percent effective? Uh, we asked the statewide surveillance epidemiologist today about, is it really only ten percent effective? And she said, we don't know yet. She said that ten percent fact came from Australia. Australia has a younger, uh, younger, an earlier flu season than, than the United States does, and that's some of the information that they're getting from Australia. It's too soon to know yet here, the effectiveness of it. But there's no denying that it will, it may not prevent you from getting sick, but it will lessen your illness, and certainly, uh, uh, almost guarantee, uh, the prevention of life-threatening effects of it. So please get your flu vaccine. I believe the local CBS pharmacy is out at this moment, Byright has it. All the primary care providers in Gulf County have flu vaccines, except for Dr. Curry's office, and the Health Department has it, we have the high dose, low dose, children, all the, all the ranges. So please don't hesitate to get your flu vaccine. We are doing another round of flu vaccine clinics in the schools. We're sending out the permission slips in backpacks, hopefully in the next day or two. Takes a couple days for us to get those vaccine, those permission slips back. We vaccinated three hundred and ten students in Gulf County, uh, in the fall. That's about average for us, but this is a little bit more serious season. We're gonna do a second round and try to catch, um, many more that didn't get it the first round. So if you have any questions, call us at the Health Department. Thank you so much for this opportunity to really impress this on you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I want to just introduce a new employee to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Sandy Martin, Business Manager at Gulf County Health Department. Wanted to introduce our new planner, this is Duke Wiser. He's our Public Health Preparedness Planner. Today's his very first day, so he's been on the job about fifteen minutes. We're proud to have him, he's here in Gulf County, raising a family right here in Gulf County, so we're proud to have a local guy.
Welcome to Gulf County.
Yeah, and he doesn't intend to, so.
Okay, all right, well, we're gonna hold that, yes, ma'am.
We have a regional epidemiologist, brand new one, in our Health Department right now for a visit, so we're gonna scoot out the back door and go, go meet with these people, so thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Ma.
Thank you. All right, moving on back to county, county staff business, uh, Mr. Novak, you have the floor?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a couple items throughout the agenda, um, things that are not listed I wanted to address with you this morning. Uh, the first was to, in the new year, bring you up to speed on the Cobra. In two thousand seventeen, you had approved under the county budget for us to continue to move forward with our lobbying efforts, um, through legislative remedy. Mr. Butler, um, Michael, uh, Mr. Yeager, and each of the Commissioners, we've all met individually with each of you to discuss our ongoing efforts. Right now, we're engaged with Capitol Hill Consulting Group, otherwise known as Mr. Steve Sutherland, our former congressman. He had introduced two House bills on behalf of Gulf County, um, and he is continuing his efforts to lobby and as a consultant for us in DC to work with Secretary Zinke's office, um, Dr. Dunn's office, and to continue to push this Cobra, uh, legislation through the House, and then ideally through, after Natural Resources Subcommittee in the Senate, and then hopefully have the bill signed. But what we needed today is, in the new year, to continue his services, need your ratification to approve, Mr. Butler, to continue to utilize it, under our current budget, we have the funds. We just wanted the authorization to continue in two thousand eighteen working with Congressman Sutherland.
You need a motion?
Yes, I do.
That's in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so move.
Motion by Mr. Macron, Commissioner Macron, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public? In the opposition? Motion passes five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the only other item that's not on the agenda I wanted to address with you is since our last meeting, we have received a deed of conveyance for the property out at the Windmark Pier from St. Joe Company. Just wanted to formally thank them, we've recorded that deed, that property now is under the ownership of Gulf County. Uh, we provided that deed of conveyance to the DEP and Pierce Barrett, and they are actually have met with Mr. Yeager and myself out on the site, and they are currently in the design aspect of the, uh, pier out at Windmark, and we hope to have that back in the next month or two. But just wanted to report to you that we now own that property from St. Joe Company, and that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hammond?
I don't have anything at this time.
Sommers? Sir Roger?
Nothing right now.
Mr. Yeager?
I think I'm number ten, so I'll, I'll present everything at number ten.
All right. Ms. Hare?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Mark and Lee today, huh?
Down south.
Down south, all right. Mr. Joe Paul?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for permission for allowing me to do this today. If, uh, Mr. Don Butler would come out here with me, please? Sometimes, boss, the best-kept secrets are hard to keep. But I think we did good this time. On behalf of the county staff, I'd like to present you this, uh, picture. It says, Dear Mr. Don Butler, thank you for almost three decades of service, serving this great citizens of Gulf County. You and I together have and will make America great again. Signed, Donald Trump, President of the United States.
Thank you, Joe. That was well kept.
He was so busy trying to get, keep the government from shutting down, he didn't have time to call you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Joe Paul. Mr. Butler, how long you got left? That's the end mark, it might be more surprises. All right, Mr. Houston? At this time, Ms. Kelly?
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I just wanted to give you a couple of quick updates from the TDC. Um, we've received our bed tax collections for October and November, um, both of which were up over last year. November was actually up twenty-seven percent, which brings our year-to-date for nine percent, um, for the year, so we're off to a healthy start. Um, we also are on schedule for our visitor guide, and the two thousand eighteen book should be here hopefully this week, so I'll be, um, getting some of those out, and our spring campaign is in full effect, so I just wanted to give you guys an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great news. Ms. Roberts? All right, Madam Clerk?
I'm nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Ms. Lynn? Sheriff? All right. That ends county staff business. We'll move right ahead to, to board business. Mr. McDaniel, you want to take the lead?
I can, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one very important item. This coming Monday, the twenty-ninth, when we will hit you in the Storm Mill Creek area, and later in the meeting, Mr. Smallwood will come up and make a recommendation to us, but, uh, we're gonna have a groundbreaking for a new fire station. And, uh, bring you up to speed, the property donated to the county by Mr. and Ms. Charles Pitts, who reside in that area. He graciously donated us just short of two acres. So the county has cleared it. And I was down at the state, and, uh, after we got the property, Mr. Pitts asked, he says, well, when do you think? I said, well, Mr. Pitts, it may be a while, we, we gotta come up with the money. And I, uh, a friend of mine, Senator Denise Grimsley, she represents the twenty-sixth senatorial district, which is down in, uh, Okeechobee County, DeSota County, Hardy County, uh, Polk County, what's another one? Highlands County, right in the center, down where a lot of the citrus and cattle country. And we have some represented here today from Deseret Cattle. I'm sure they, uh, had a few cattle grazing, you know, in, in some of these counties I named. But anyway, I went to her and talked to her, I said, I need help. But in three months, she had landed us four hundred thousand dollars for this new station. I said, well, Denise, I thank you, but we got a lot more hurdles in the road. Well, we got it before the appropriations, we got it through there. It didn't get killed there. We got it to the governor's desk. I said, oh, my goodness, so we lobbied Governor Scott, and he did not veto it, so. We're getting brand-new fire station for the north end, and it'll serve everyone, that means everyone from the Calhoun County line down. If you live in that area up in there, he'll have, help him with his insurance coming on down. But we're gonna have this groundbreaking next Monday, the twenty-ninth, at eight o'clock, WeWaltown. One of these days, I wish we could get this county all on the same time. But anyway, we would, I would graciously, and this board would graciously appreciate you coming up. And I think, uh, also, uh, Senator Grimsley, she served, I want to say, three terms in the House, and she elevated up to the Senate, and she's gonna run for Commissioner of Agriculture. But, uh, some young lady out of Sebring, Florida, come up here and help a little old place in Gulf County. To me, that's, that's very gracious, but I just had the opportunity to sit down and talk with her, and she came through for Gulf County. Surely did. So any of you, if you can, if you would, come up, that's the twenty-ninth. Eight o'clock, WeWaltown, up right behind the creek stop, go up seventy-one, turn left on the Storm Mill, and you can't miss it, it's right there only left. But, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner McDaniel. Commissioner Rogers?
I just wanted to say thank you to the staff and St. Joe Corporation for that land out there at St. Joe Beach. I know y'all worked hard to get that. Gonna be great for Gulf County to finally have a here. Not here yet, you know, we still got some hurdles, but we're on our way. Thank y'all very much.
Mr. Rich, got anything?
Yes, sir, I'll be there at the groundbreaking, uh, Monday morning.
Thank you. Mr. Macron?
Uh, just want to brag on the TDC a little bit, got hearing good things. Had somebody brag on y'all the other day, said y'all were very pleasant to work with, uh, somebody in charter business, so just wanna, thank you.
So, uh, I have one thing I wanted to present to the, uh, to the board. The Tenth Street Committee has been, uh, meeting monthly, and, uh, we have all agreed on a conceptual site plan that, uh, that I would like to present to the board for board approval, uh, this morning, um, so we can continue to move the, uh, move this vision forward. I'm gonna get Mr. Smallwood to come forward, he has, uh, some of those, uh, site plans, might be laid out on, on the, uh, in the back somewhere. But, uh, I, I, before we, uh, and I, I need the board to give me a motion to, uh, to, to move forward, but I want to make a couple, just two changes on that. Those, uh, if you look at the site plan, the, uh, the hundred and eighty-foot, hundred and eighty-feet fields, I want to make those, uh, two hundred feet instead of one eighty. So that was, that was the only two change. Both of those one eighty need to be two hundred, so if, if I can get someone in the.
So move.
Give me a motion to, uh, make those changes and to approve this, this site plan.
Second, second.
All right, so I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Mr. Macron?
Yes.
Any, uh, board discussion on this?
Uh, just want to say, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your work on this, a long time coming.
Yes, sir. Anyone in the, in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Smallwood, you want to say a little something about it?
No, sir, I have nothing to add, other than, um, you know, the, the committee last Tuesday morning, the Parks Committee, uh, voted to move forward with this. The city commissioner reviewed it their meeting last week also, they voted to move forward with it, so, uh, it's, it's here in front of you, uh, this morning, and then the idea would be to take this and, and try to make it a reality now. And so kind of move from the conceptual phase into the, into the permitting, the design phase, and, and try to get this thing constructed, so. And there are extra copies going around, I can print more if there's folks in the public that need more. Certainly can get, you know, we'll distribute more hard copies or email it out or whatever we need to, so we can certainly do that.
All right, we appreciate your time, your hard work.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Can you come up, come up to the microphone? Oh, to the, uh, to the fields, the one hundred and eighty-foot fields, see those fields?
That are one hundred and eighty.
They already, they say one eighty, we're gonna make those two hundred, just add twenty feet to each one. Well, we, Ms., uh. Can you, can you come up to the mic before we can get your name for the record, please? The reason being is, we had, we had opportunity to speak with a guy that does, uh, baseball tournaments, and so a lot of times when teams come, they look for fields that, uh, are at least two hundred feet.
Oh, for tournaments?
Yes.
So that you have other teams coming into town?
Please give your name.
Yeah, please state your name for the record.
Okay, so that's just two hundred feet, okay.
And just, just add an additional twenty feet to each one. Thank you, ma'am. Any, any more questions from the public? My, 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 my goal is to, um, uh, once again, take this back to the, uh, to the committee, and hopefully, uh, when I, when we meet with the committee, we can get a, a budget, and then I can bring a budget back to the board and let us know how much, um, the project is, uh, is going, is going to cost us. Do I have any opposition to the most, to the motion? All right, motion passes five and oh. And that is all.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, um, I know you did a motion before to expand, extend it from one eighty to two hundred, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then there was a second to ratify the conceptual plan to move forward from the commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thought you put it all in one motion.
It's all one, it was all one motion?
Thank you.
That is all I have. Uh, at this time, we're gonna ask Ms., uh, Ms. Barbara Eltonhausen? Can you come on up, Ms. Barbara? Off Leash Dog Park, behind the library, she's gonna come up, discuss something for us.
Good morning.
When you get to the mic, state your name for the, for the record, Ms., Ms. Barbara. When you get to the mic, state your name for the, for the record, Ms., Ms. Barbara.
Can you go to the mic?
I have submitted, uh,
State your name for the record, Ms. Barbara.
Barbara Eltenhausen. And, uh, is that all you need is my name?
Address.
At three-forty Marina Drive, Port Saint Joe.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I have submitted, uh, uh, a recommendation for, for the commissioner's consideration for an off-leash dog park on the property behind the library and the senior citizen center. I have submitted a two-page document to the commissioners outlining what I think are the necessary requirements and the concerns that have to be, worked out. And I can certainly go through those if you'd like. The thing, the documents that I just handed you were the petitions that I, um, distributed around town. And those are the signatures that I collected. There are twenty-four pages of fifteen sig, uh, fifteen signatures on each page. So I wanted to do this because I wanted you to be aware that this wasn't something that I was just dreaming up in my head, but that I have talked to people in the community. So, um, there are some considerations. Obviously, the things that I like about the property behind the library is that, um, it is almost fenced. Uh, it has gates there that need to be reinstalled. It has access to water for the animals, and it has parking. Those three things are very important. The, the concerns that I have are, is that in my discussion with the sheriff, we need to make allowances for the training and the maintenance of the, uh, dogs and the canine crew. The, obviously, the fencing has to be completed once the boundaries of the park identified. There is, it is about, I'm gonna say sixty percent fence now. There is fencing there, but it's just been busted open and thrown to the side. I can only assume, I don't know, but I can only assume that it was done so that they could cut down the trees uh, that were cut down some time ago. We need to have uh, stations for dog bags and, uh, collection. I'm recommending that, uh, four, which is normal for large places like this. It needs to be signed for liability. And, um, and, and we need to have water plum, plumbed over to the park, inside the park, so that water is accessible. So, those are the concerns. I think I've outlined them. I don't know what other concerns you might have.
Hold on one second, Ms. Barbara. That was your time. Get a motion to.
Oh, move.
A motion by Mr. McCrone?
Second.
Taken by Mr. Rogers. Go ahead, Ms.
Um, if you have any other questions, I can answer them. I don't have a lot of history here in Port Saint Joe, so you'll have to sort of help me out here. But what I'm proposing is that there needs to be a thirty-day work group, or a sixty-day work group, to work out the details. We've had some offers, uh, donating fencing. We've had offers of people who are willing to help put the fence up. And, um, so those all have to be worked out. So what I'm asking is, can we get a thirty-day work group or a sixty-day work group together to work out the details and come back to the commission and basically make a recommendation?
I don't, um, I had the opportunity to talk, to speak with Ms. Barbara. I, I don't think we need no type of, we don't need to make what type of motion to, to a thirty-day or sixty-day work group.
If I understand the request, Ms. Barbara, you're asking that the commission establish a committee? To, to vet this project? Is that the proposal? So that if there was a consideration of the board after public comment, commissioner, that any commissioner can make a motion if you wanted to establish such a, a review process. There's no, there's nothing that compels the commission to do anything. It's certainly up to you all to ask the questions and move forward.
Okay, okay. We got any, any public comment on, uh, this issue? Can you, can you come on up to the, uh, to the podium, please? Make sure you state your name once again and your address for the record.
Uh, it's M.R.C.I.A. Most people spell it wrong, sorry. Um, I think it's
Give your address to Ms. Ms. Marsh.
I think this is a per, perfect opportunity for this town. On that area, if it's extended from Cecil Costin Parkway, it can go all the way back to the, um, the shel, the animal shelter there. That gives the shelter more visibility to get those animals adopted out. You also have a pause prison program that you have prisoners who have served their time, who also work over there, and they probably could also volunteer to help with the training of some of the animals in the community. I think it's a perfect opportunity for this county.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. Anybody else with, uh, comment on this issue? Yes, sir. Sheriff?
As you know, that area is being used as a, uh, canine training field for the sheriff's office at this time. Currently, we have two, uh, canines that are being trained. One's in narcotic detection, and the other one's narcotic detection and full-service dog. If this is moved forward, I will be needing to look for another canine training field. Um, the, I've spoken with Ms. Barbara. She did come in the office and speak to me back before the holidays. Uh, the training officer that I use is, is a contract employee. Um, he's been off the last couple of months, out of town with his family for the holidays. He's back in. We just started doing a little bit of training last week to get another dog certified. We ran the idea by him, and due to the scent and other dogs being there on that field, it would absolutely contaminate it to where training would be impossible for him to conduct it there. So, uh, I'm not opposed to a, a, a park for, for animals, uh, but that location right there, if you do choose to use that, I'll have to look for another location to do the training of the, uh, um, the, the canines there. So, uh, just want to make sure you take that into consideration. What is existing out there now, of course, is our obstacle course for the, uh, dogs, and we're doing the obedience and, uh, the training in the very beginning on that. We also have a canine, uh, office, if you will, that's a portable building that's out there that serves as their offices, uh, if they're training during the summer to get out of the heat for a little bit and do some of their paperwork, uh, during the hot hours of the day. Um, that's located in that general location as well. But, uh, once again, I'm not opposed to it, but, uh, I'll have to relocate everything if you choose to go that direction there. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, may I please?
Yes, sir. Chair recognizes Mr. McDaniel.
Ladies and gentlemen, we, just a few days or very short period of time, we will be moving into our new Public Works Building. Last year, there was some discussion, and if you'll notice, we, there was a lot of pine trees out there. We cut the pines down for two reasons. One, we have a future use of that. And secondly, the trees were cut in case of a hurricane, they wouldn't blow down and hit the guy wires and tear the cable, the tower down. It'd fall probably through the courthouse or somewhere. After we get into our, uh, it's in the plans, we're going to have to secure that area. We're gonna put a, uh, we'll have a fence across there. The young lady was talking about where the dogs could go all the way down to the Humane Society. Well, that'll be fenced off, that area. So I just want to bring that up. I, I know, uh, they have a good, uh, out at, uh, you say you live in Guffair?
I live in the Marina.
Oh, okay, okay. I, I apologize there. But I know out at Beacon Hill Veterans Park, ice area out there. People, and they utilize it with their animals, you know, where they could. And I, 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 I'm all for you, but we have got some future plans for that land there. And we're gonna have to secure it. Got to secure, got thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars worth of equipment and all in there. Got to secure that area. So you mentioned about having a long walkway. That'll kill that.
May I?
You may.
I actually walk a dog in that property every morning. And it is not my intention to go all the way to the Humane Society. That is, that is not.
Well, I misunderstood you.
No, uh, 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 okay. Uh, the boundaries have, have not yet been determined. Uh, you know, throwing out ideas, but obviously, there's a tarred area where the new Public Works Building is. That's a perfect boundary right there. I have no problem with that. And if you need to, if you need to secure that area, that's, that would be the boundary, because that's plenty of room.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think what Mr. McDaniel is saying, that the building, that it's not just about all the equipment that the Public Works has, is gonna move over to that building. So everything's gonna move over. Am I right, Mr. McDaniel?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. You may.
Yes, we have security. EOC has some equipment here. Our security fence will be over here is our EOC building, next building over. It would be right behind it, going from the ditch out here on that Knoll Street. Am I correct there? There, coming across all the way to our, if you'd call it our, maybe northeast boundary.
Assuming that that's the end of the tarred area is the boundary of that building.
Well, now that Now, we, that hadn't been established by our staff this time, but we have there, and then we do have, Sheriff said he utilizes that for his training, canine. But, uh, we can work up something, seriously. Seriously, I think we can.
Let me
We're going to secure that area back there. We have too much stuff unsecured.
Let me just add this, Ms. Barbara. We, we definitely don't want to put the sheriff in the hearts. Barbara, we don't want to move, we don't want, want to move that. Let's just, to move forward with this issue, let's just hand it off to the staff, and let's see what the staff come back with recommendations. If they can find a, uh, an area that they might think will be suitable for a dog park, um, in, in that, in this area. Let's see, let's see what they can come up with. Before we, uh, we can, we move forward and
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, um, have you asked the city about this, since you're a city resident? And we are in the city of Port Saint Joe here.
No, I've come to the county because it's county property.
Does the city have anything available, Mr. Rogers?
I couldn't answer that right off. I think there's some other areas that you could look at, you know, let the staff look at it.
Yeah, yeah, let's hand it off to the staff and let's, let's see what the staff can come back. See if the staff come out with a recommendation for the board. See what we can do.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Barbara. We, uh, we gonna, we gonna go ahead and move forward. We gonna, we gonna hand it off to the staff and let the staff come back with recommendations for us. Uh, we, we hope, uh, they'll come back by the next board meeting with some, some type of recommendation. Yes. All right, we're moving on to number se, uh, number six, I'm sorry, beach restoration project and report. Who's, uh, who's the lead man on that?
Mr. Chairman, we had your special meeting at eight fifteen this morning, and Michael Nebraska gave you all the details on beach re-nursing. He gave you a recommendation on how he would recommend to you to move forward. Uh, reviewed Michael's, um, proposals in his, his presentation to you the last couple of days. And, um, I'd, one, I'd have Michael come back up to the podium, and two, I'd recommend the board do move forward and, and start the process. Let Mike work out the bid documents and the new bid specs, put it out for bid, and get that project going. And the second part is, I would recommend that after we make a legal review, that we purchase that piece of property that we were talking about in the earlier meeting, purchase it. It will up the ante for the state to keep more money in. Hopefully, it will. That's what we'll be working on, trying to figure out. And I think we, uh, by buying that piece of property, the ROI on it, the return on investment will be greater than what the property costs are gonna be. But we're at a point now, we, we need, I think we need to move forward with the beach preservation project.
Yeah, the floor, Mr. Mike.
Yes, the, um, what we would recommend is what we presented earlier that today, which would be to remove the, the north beach fill area and solely focus on the southern, uh, fill limits, which is between Stump Hole and, um, uh, the Rish Park. And how we would propose to do that is to reverse bid this, to give contractors a maximum price and based on who comes in at the most cubic yards and, uh, would be the, uh, awarded the contract, provided that that volume is sufficient to do what we would like. So that is our recommendation to the board.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, we got a motion by, uh, Commissioner McCrone.
Second, for discussion.
Taken by Commissioner McDaniel for discussion. Mr. McDaniel, you have
In our earlier meeting, I listened and I understood what you said there about it. But now, going to do this, sa, the Stump Hole area and move to the north area. And I know there's gonna be, you're gonna submit plans to whether we have a hundred-and-fifty, I'm just, these are numbers now. Hundred-and-fifty feet, two-hundred-and-fifty feet, three-hundred feet, how far we can go out and how far we can go toward Rish Park.
That is correct, sir.
Pretty much, yes, yeah. All right, sir. Well, that, that's one thing I want to say. And, uh, secondly, I want to thank the people and at the Cape. Very patient people, understanding people, and, uh, I know been beating this horse for, gosh, I don't know, close to ten years, more, five years? Anyway, but I want to thank them for their patience, and hopefully, we can get, get this thing moving, moving. Mr. Chairman, my second stands.
Yes, sir. Any further board discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Attorney, is this bid procedure all up and above board yet?
Yes, uh, Commissioner, what, what you did in two thousand seventeen at the end, you rejected those bids that came in, seven, six, seven million dollars over, what your, uh, budget was. And as you've heard from the reports in the workshop today, we've gone back. The staff has come up with these recommendations. What this will do today, if you authorize and accept the recommendations, is to start the process over. We'll reverse bid it. Um, it's just another approach to it, but we give our vendors the opportunity to see what our budget is and what they can produce in terms of volume. And in the meantime, also approving those expenditures that Mr. Nebraska has discussed today for the surveys and the additional work to be considered. But it has all been vetted. We've reviewed the recommendations, um, and there's nothing problematic about it.
Thank you.
Another board discussion. Anyone in the public on this beach restoration? Come on up, Dr. Hart.
Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association. Again, uh, just for the record, I want to tell you how much I appreciate all the work done by the staff. They have gone above and beyond call of duty. Uh, I will hope you pass this today so that we have an option. We do have, as late as last week, I was sick and had an appointment, and Michael and, uh, Warren and Butch went up, and we have three million dollars back into appropriations budget that could possibly come forward. So when we reverse bid, don't lock that out if we could get, use that later if it happens to come to fruition. It's a long shot, but it's in appropriations now. And so let's hold that out there and, uh, make sure that we can use that if we happen to be lucky enough to get it. And I just really appreciate every effort that y'all have made.
Yes, thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, on my motion, just three million, if it was to come in, we could leave that option, you know?
If, if we can leave the number out, let the staff come up with a number, because we're gonna back out if the board so chooses to buy that lot from that amount.
And, and
And, and if we get more money, we'll just add more volume.
Okay, and, and the lot's in that motion also?
That was gonna be our question.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
We made that changes. Mr. McDaniel, your second still stands, right?
It does, Mr. Chairman.
Any more board, board discussion? Anyone, anyone else in the public on this issue? Come on up, ma'am. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Janet Grinzinger, eight-five-one, uh, sorry, that's my wrong address. Two-five-seven-nine State Road, thirty-eight.
Yeah, the floor.
Thank you. Um, I, this doesn't affect me at all. It just popped in my head when we were talking about from the Stump Hole North to possibly Rish. What about those folks that are north of Rish Park that have paid into that? I don't know if there'll be repercussions or if, you know, what they think about their money situation. Just something to think about.
Uh, Nebraska, you wanna speak on?
Okay, thank you.
On that issue, please.
Yes, uh, part of that recommendation that we did have was to, um, repair hotspots on the southern end through a truck haul. So by all means, that we're not totally deleting the, the northern section of this. It would be more of a, uh, going out and remediating hotspots as they're needed. So that would still be part of that program.
And, and Mike, so, so everybody knows in the workshop this morning, the northern portion of the beach is increasing in a lot of places.
That is, that is true.
So everybody knows that the study has been, okay.
And that most of the sand that shows that is accreting on that northern section is from the southern. So eventually, they are going to get a portion of that sand.
Any, any more questions for Mr. Nebraska and the public? All right, we got a motion by Commissioner McCrone. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any opposition to?
Yes, sir.
Hold on.
One more clarification.
Okay.
I apologize, I missed the motion. Don's recommendation was to, to do two things. To do the, the bid, reverse bid as recommended, and to buy that lot contingent upon County Attorney making sure that we could get access. You know, we've, we've attempted to buy two of these lots in the past. And when we got down to closing, it, it was a problem with access. We will only buy it if it provides access to raise our, the state's match portion. So as long as, just make sure that's in the motion.
Do that in your motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any, uh, opposition to the motion? No opposition, motion passes five and oh. Thank you, Mr. uh, Nebraska.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, moving on down to number seven. Procurement Policy Amendments and Revision. Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, as it comes down to you, as you know, over the last few meetings, uh, regular meetings, you've addressed the procurement policy for the county. Over the last eight years or so, we've had several revisions. We've added a, a language. Most recently in December, we added P three, Public Private Partnership Florida Statute Language, as well as Competitive Consultant Negotiation Act Language to address two provisions that the county has used, which we did in December, to move forward on a couple of our private partner, private-public partnerships. In addition, we've now met with the, uh, Ms. Norris and her staff at the clerk's office in an ongoing effort to try to address issues that come up for the county in the procurement, um, issues that come up on a weekly basis. So what you have in front of you, um, the staff is continuing to meet. We met as recently as last week. Ms. Norris and her staff provided some additional comments that we hope to continue to revise this policy in the months to come. Right now, what we have from Mr. Butler, Mr. Hammond, as you'll see, there's a, a few minor changes. But what we've done now is we've added the authority, uh, for the administrator under number nine to move forward on state purchases that have been previously approved by this commission, uh, under your budget on an annual basis. And I'll give you an example. You all, uh, the commission approves a budget, um, for each department. If there's a state procurement and a state contract that is out there, um, each time we bring that back to you all. And looking back over your records over the last seven and a half years, I did not find where you did not accept the recommendation of staff to move forward on a state contract. Another county goes through the procurement process, secures the best bid, um, and we've presented those to you over the years. This would give the administrator, when it is presented under a state contract for a department purchase that's been budgeted, to move forward without the commission approval. So that is the first amendment. The second is with regards to change orders also, authorizing the administrator to sign off on change orders. Uh, most recently, we have a change order, I think, for six dollars and another for zero dollars. But it needs to come back to you each time for those change orders. But we are asking for the administrator to have that authority. And then the third is the, uh, authorization for professional services agreements that you budgeted. Uh, we indicated earlier today that the, uh, consulting, uh, group that we're working with in Washington, um, to have the administrator, once you budget the funds for that, that he has the authorization to move forward and execute those agreements. The final, under three C, would be the administrative authorization for purchase of commodities. Historically, when they purchase chemicals, aggregate, rock materials under previously approved commission annual budget. Each one of these provisions that I've stated for you, that we've discussed, um, through the administration, are budgeted items. They're not outside the budget. So what you're giving is your administrator the authorization to move forward and operating the county's business on a daily basis without calendaring and bringing it back to you all, um, for what would be a administrative or a nominal amount. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, as I've said before in previous meetings on the procurement policy, it's an ongoing process. We're hoping that as we move through this, we'll have a, um, a very comprehensive and robust, uh, policy. But as you've seen over the last few months, we will continue to add to it as we meet with staff and Ms. Norris. But those are the recommendations of staff today to add to your procurement policy.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Novak. You heard the, uh, recommendations come from Mr. Novak. Any board, uh, discussion on this by any board members?
Chairman, do I need to abstain from this vote?
No, sir.
Okay.
Not, no, sir.
So we need a motion, right? Entertain a motion?
Say move.
Got a motion by Mr. Rich. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further, uh, any further bu- board discussion? Anyone in the public on the procurement policy? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh. All right, moving on down to number eight. Public Hearing, County Road Abandements. Once again, Mr. Novak, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, um, Lynn's gonna help us with the audio visual.
Yes, sir.
Um, as your December twelfth meeting, if you recall, and actually on November twenty eighth as well, the commission instructed the staff to move forward on the proposed abandements of several county roads, rightaways. And we've moved forward in that direction on several, uh, one of them being County Line Road, another being County Road G T fourteen, also Muskogee and Rish Harbor. As we've gone through over the holidays and got ready for today's meeting, um, we've received correspondence and communications from some of the landowners uh, through our commissioner and the staff with regards to Muskogee and Rish Harbor. As I understand it, uh, Commissioner McDaniel is working and talking with the folks out there. Um, and that's an ongoing issue. There was a request that, that that be, uh, addressed at the next month's meeting and be tabled and removed from today's. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Chairman?
Yes, sir, you may.
Yes, it will not be addressed at this meeting today.
Um, and per that, uh, request and direction, um, that issue was not noticed. The two that were noticed for today, Chairman Commissioners, is County Line Road and County Road G T fourteen. Um, Lynn's gonna bring them up. As you recall, from December twelfth and November twenty eighth, the proposed abandements, uh, with Deseret, uh, ranches of North Florida. Uh, and, and I think Calvin Winder, the attorney for Deseret's here today. I think Michael Archibald wanted to be here, but he couldn't. But Calvin, are you here? There you are. Good morning. Calvin and I have spoken over the holidays as well. As we move through this process, the proposed abandements per Florida statute and your county policies are that we would have public hearings. You would take the property owner's comments and considerations into, uh, into, uh, your deliberation, and we'd have public hearings. You voted on December twelfth to move forward with the abandonment process for these two roads. Um, in, in consideration of this abandonment as well, Deseret has worked with the county and has proposed that they are going to convey over Odina Boat Ramp to the county for future parks and recreation purposes, which we've had a lot of progress on. We finalized the legal, um, and that is something that will follow. In addition to that, Road twelve, um, working with, uh, Deseret, it was, they were gonna relinquish any legal access or right to that, to the county as well. For the purposes of today's public hearings, they've been advertised in accordance with Florida law. Um, you each have the notice in front of you, which is the first two pages. Beyond that, uh, under county policy is we would adopt a resolution for each of these abandements after your consideration. Um, you've had several public hearings, as I've indicated, under Florida Statute one ninety seven. And after your consideration and public hearing today, those resolutions, if you would allow me afterward to read them by title, uh, will be up for your consideration. If you abandon these roads, we'll move forward. I'll provide them to Ms. Norris in the clerk's office. They'll become public record. We'll put the notice of the resolution in our, uh, regular circulation and public notice, and they will be abandoned officially by the county. And the private landowners, obviously, will then have that, uh, property, uh, access. It'll be cut off for public purposes. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I don't know, Calvin, if you wanted to add anything to either of those issues. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, sir, so I'll make sure I got this correct. We're gonna do, uh, we're gonna do a public hearing on County Line Road first, and then we'll do one on-
Yes, sir.
G T fourteen.
That is correct.
Okay, okay, I got you. All right, so now we're gonna have a public hearing on County, uh, County Line Road, uh, open to the public for, for questions. About in the public, got questions on County Line Road? The questions are closed to the, closed to the public, open to the, uh, board, to the Board of County Commissioners? And any commissioner with any questions on County Line Road? Any commissioners? None? All right, um, wanna read the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman, a resolution of Gulf County, Board of County Commissioners whereby granting the abandonment of said roadways and rightaways commonly referred to as County Line Road, and directing county departments for assistance in the abandonment and implementation as follows. Uh, it's, the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners considered the following abandonment. Gulf County-owned and maintained rightaway, commonly historically referred to as County Line Road, that begins on State Highway twenty-two in Gulf County, along and adjacent to parcels owned by Deseret Ranches of North Florida, LLC, and extends for approximately six point nine four miles, heading south by southeast to its terminus on a parcel owned also by Deseret Ranches of North Florida, which intersects with Pleasant Rest Road in Gulf County. And it's whereas the Board has received the above, uh, Gulf County G I S references and description, setting forth specific descriptions of the abandements and are attached for the resolution for clarity. Uh, Gulf County has properly noticed and conducted public hearings on December twelfth, also on January twenty-third for this proposed abandonment pursuant to Florida Statute one eighty-seven, and wherein the Board unanimously voted during December twelfth to move forward with the abandonment and set a public hearing date for consideration and adoption of this authorizing resolution. It is set for your, uh, consideration today. It reads hereby abandons the stated roadway and rightaways as defined herein. Proper notice, public hearing, authorizing to the Board of County Commissioners. Be it further resolved that the Board has accepted this proposed abandonment based in part on the notice, public hearing, board comment, discussion and detailed conditions, and affirmative representations of the property and owner and/or their legal representatives presented in written or oral testimony to the official county record that include their consent and request for the subject abandonment, for which a here and after shall be the adjacent landowner's exclusive maintenance obligations in perpetuity to maintain said roadways and rightaways. Be it further resolved, Board directs county staff to provide said resolution to the landowners for implementation and fulfillment of the stated conditions and obligations of the private parties. It's set up for the chairman's signature, um, to be witnessed by Ms. Norris and to be made part of public record, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you, uh, Mr. Novak. You heard the resolution read by, uh, Mr. Novak. Can I get a, need a motion to, uh, move forward with this?
Motion to move forward.
Motion by-
County Line Road.
County Line Road. Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rich. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public, County Line Road? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh. All right, Mr. Novak, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, the second is County Road G T fourteen. Again, these were, uh, put up, um, and advertised. I will skip through the entire resolution. I'll read it. It is whereas the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners considered the following abandonment as follows. Gulf County-owned and maintained rightaway, commonly and historically referred to as Gulf County Road G T fourteen, that be- begins on State Highway twenty-two in Gulf County, along and adjacent to parcels owned by Deseret Ranches of North Florida, LLC, and extends for approximately five point zero seven miles, heading south to its terminus on a parcel owned also by Deseret Ranches of North Florida, which intersects with Williams Bay Road in Gulf County. The additional language is, as I stated prior on the previous resolution, uh, setting up for your consideration and adoption following public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Now we have a public hearing on Gulf County Road G T fourteen. It's open to the public for public, for any questions. Anybody in the public with questions on G T fourteen, Road G T fourteen? Anyone? Okay, closed to the public, board members. Any board members with questions on Road G T fourteen? None? All right, closed to the board. On you, Mr. Novak.
Mr. Chairman, if the Board would entertain a motion for the adoption of that abandonment?
Need a, can I get a motion to, uh, adoption of that abandonment of G T, County Road G T fourteen?
Say move.
Motion by Mr. Rich.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any for, uh, any further board discussion? County Road G T fourteen. Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you for that. Just to, uh, for the public, uh, February twenty-seventh is your next regular scheduled commission meeting. Between now and then, the staff will continue to work with, uh, Commissioner McDaniel on the other two proposed, uh, abandements that we started the process on. And with regards to the two that you just adopted, we'll move, work with the clerk's office to get these notices advertised and posted as part of public record. And I'll also work with Mr. Winder and Deseret for the Odina and Road twelve. Ideally, we'll come back in February and present those conveyances for Odina Boat Ramp to you all. For your, uh, you voted at the last meeting to accept it. I'll, uh, ideally formally present that deed to you to vote for and accept at your February meeting.
So number nine, we, we just took care of number nine. Odina Boat Ramp.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr., uh, Mr. Novak. All right, we're moving on down to number ten. Multi-year implementation plan. Mr. Jaeger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'll be as brief as I can. Y'all have had a, a full agenda so far, and I know you've got a lot to go. Actually, before I get to the multi-year implementation plan, uh, as y'all know, we've been working, uh, with Eastern Ship Building, St. Joe Company, the Port Authority, on the property, uh, and, and on the floating dry dock in, in, uh, the Triumph, uh, our Triumph submittal. And, um, wanted to let you know that the Port Authority has actually sent a letter, uh, in support of that entire project. Along with that, that letter for, uh, consideration of the board, they wanted to submit to y'all and ask y'all for a, an ownership piece. And they had, they had requested a fifty percent ownership of that floating dry dock. So, uh, I had, uh, initially, when they had started those discussions, I said, "Look, get, get a motion of your board and, and we will present that back to our board." And that's what we're doing here today, is to present that back to you, their request for fifty, fifty percent ownership of the dry dock. And so if you have any questions on that, the, the staff and I will do everything we can to answer it.
Any, uh, any questions for Mr. Jaeger on that proposal? Any board members? No questions?
Uh, in, in that, uh, I think, uh, there's a lot of things that we need to consider and that you need to consider, and, and to help you make those decisions on, on when you, you make those decisions. And one of the things is, is, uh, the next Triumph board meeting is on the twenty-ninth. And so we will know, I, what we have been told by the, uh, chairman of the Triumph Committee and also the, uh, the staff of the Triumph Committee, is they'll be ready to put these things in a couple of different pots. And, and those pots will be either go to full application for this, these funds, or we need some additional, uh, information on these funds. So what, what we're hearing, we actually had a, uh, conference call, the staff, uh, last Friday. At two-thirty, we had a conference call with the staff of Triumph. And, and they, they had a few questions. So I think, um, what that may wind up being is that, is they've always said that they may need fifty percent match money with, with any monies that you've actually requested. And what we've requested is twenty-eight million dollars for the entire, uh, construction of that, uh, design and construction of that, uh, floating dry dock. So I'm not sure what percentage of that the Triumph is gonna wind up, um, funding. But that's something to consider when you consider how you divvy up any, any ownership for all of us, uh, at that point. Because I'm, uh, I would feel sure that if they said, "We're gonna, uh, we're gonna provide seventy-five percent, and you gotta provide the other twenty-five percent," then that's gonna fall back to some of the folks with the, the Eastern and, and others. And then that will confuse a little bit of the ownership. So it may be something that you want to table, or it may be something that you want to address right now. But it's just, it's, it's up to the board or how you want to address that.
Okay, Ms. Chairman.
And I'll defer to, if there's any- And I'll defer to, if there's any further comment, if I've covered it as about as well as I can cover it.
Chair recognizes Commissioner McCrone.
So, at this time, we, we don't have a firm number, actually, of what, we have an idea of what dry dock's gonna cost, but far as ownership, uh, something we need to look at down the, where are we at, I guess, is what it?
Let me go.
Yeah.
We, I just wanna say that, that, uh, we've had ongoing conversations with everybody, positive, productive, ongoing conversations. And I had a, an impromptu meeting with the Chairman and their attorney, and, and we could all agree on this, that never before in our time, not in my twenty-five years with the county, has the county, the Port Authority, the city, all been on the same page, all rowing in the same direction, all striving for the same goal. So, we would like to continue negotiations. We've had good faith negotiations. We've gone back and forth to the Board, meeting individually with you about splitting, uh, any revenues, splitting any sales, splitting any equity. I don't think we're to that point of, that we can agree on that at this time, but we can get there. And I think, I think it's, it's gonna depend on who has to put up the money in, in what location. If Eastern has to put up a huge chunk of money, they're gonna want a huge chunk of ownership. And, and the, the idea is to keep this in public control, especially if public money pays for it, whoever owns it. So, we, we're having productive, uh, negotiations, and we need to keep those lines of communications open, uh, but I don't think we're prepared to make a recommendation pro or con on that request today.
Just to, to give you something a little further, Mr. Chairman, this, uh, we made a, a, a submittal of what we thought a dry dock, uh, would cost of that magnitude, of that size, and those type things, and it's, it's totally an estimate. As, as you will see further down, you've got some, um, you've got some engineering, companies that, that responded to a, a request to design that dry dock. Once you design that dry dock, you'll have a bitter, little, little better understanding of what that dry dock's gonna cost. And so, I, I think while we've said twenty-eight million dollars, for all, for all we know, it may be fifteen million, or it may be thirty-five million, uh, but there's just a lot of unknowns still with this process. But I think we'll get further down the road on the twenty-ninth when we, when, uh, and I would encourage each one of you to be there if you can. It's in, it's in Appalachia Cola at the Board of County Commissioners Meeting Room on, on the twenty-ninth. I think it's one o'clock. But, uh, there's, there's, there's a lot of unanswered questions yet, so that's all to be considered by y'all.
So, what I'm hearing, you wanna, we need a motion to table? Further discussion?
Or, or either, uh, yes, that, that would be fine, a motion to table, and, and let, let staff continue to work with, uh, the Port Authority and Eastern Ship Building and Triumph, and, and let us come back at a later date to say, "Here's what Triumph, here's what Triumph presented, and here's what we can, here's what we think that we can work out," and, and go from there. So, a motion to table would be fine.
I entertain a motion.
A move.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone. Get a second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further, uh, board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion to table passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll proceed with what was on the agenda now, the, uh, your NYPD plan. If you'll remember, back in, uh, December, uh, you had approved a plan. We had recommended through our grant consultant that, uh, the Board come up with a five-year plan to submit to Treasury, uh, over the next five years. You'll accumulate probably another five million dollars in your pot. As you know, you've committed two point eight million dollars of your first amount of money, and that's going directly to your, uh, beach restoration project, as part of your funding for your beach restoration project. We are, we are, uh, have submitted the grant for that, so we think we're, uh, in line with timing of that project and that type thing. Uh, but going forward, we got these other, uh, other projects that you've actually already, recommended that we proceed with. So, the five-year plan, I just wanted to give you a, an update of where we're at. We'll need action on one, uh, well, on two of these, on, on two of these items. I think the, I think the, probably the attorney's got some of the information on that, but before he gets to that, I wanted to mention the welding program, uh, that you've committed for, uh, Weewahatchika, Weewahatchika High School. We're still working with, uh, the school system on that. Uh, we're working with the grant consultant. All those documents are, are in. We'll put that in the, uh, plan, the five-year plan that we will advertise probably next month, uh, so that funding can be made available, so they can start that program next year, and that's what we're, that's what we're pushing for with that program. So, that being said, we hope they have wel, the welding program. We hope that we have the welding program in place, uh, for the next school year in Weewahatchika High School. The next I wanted to mention, we had, uh, as I said, we met with a grant consultant last week, and to talk about all these projects, uh, some of the, a, a lot of this money that you've proposed in this five-year plan goes to the two cities for Septic to Sewer, for water projects and those type things. So, uh, we met with, uh, both cities' engineers with the grant consultant. I think that they're actually gonna have a conference call tomorrow to, to narrow those things down. So, the monies to the cities, uh, will be appropriated in that five-year work plan, and, uh, some of it may be phased, because some of the projects that both of the cities have is more than you will actually have in the first five years. So, uh, we're working on that. I want you to know that both cities are, 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 are working really well and trying to get their projects, uh, phased and prioritized. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned, uh, a sewer rehab project, uh, in, in your district, and that's one of the ones that we're focusing on too, through, through that process. So, that was the second, uh, second program in the five-year work plan. Another one was the erosion control. You had actually put some money in this particular pot to go along with Pot Three funding too, for some erosion control. You know, when we do this project out here at Cape Sand Blast, we've been talking about something to try to lessen the erosion rate, and so, uh, you've got some money in the erosion control. Michael, I don't know if he's still here, yeah? Michael's still here. The, uh, grant consultant's working with Michael on exactly what that project looks like. Uh, you've got funding in, in Pot One for that. You also have some in Pot Three if that funding in Pot One does not completely cover that project. But that's another project that we're moving forward in the five-year work plan that you've already approved in, in, in going forward. The last two were acquisitions. One of, one of the things that you had, that you approved in December was a, what I will call now about, that the grant consultant says we should call it, is public safety. And basically, it's, uh, uh, Public Safety Office that you will have nine-one-one, folks in, you're consolidating, uh, your sheriff's office, your nine-one-one, your dispatch. If I'm missing anything, continue, but, uh, you're putting them all in one building. We have found a building downtown, uh, and working with the grant consultants, instead of using the taxpayers' dollars to purchase that building, uh, we believe that we can use these Pot One funds to do that. So, we have worked out actually some agreements and some contracts, and I think they're, these must be the ones that they've handed to me, so I'll hand these out to you. Well, matter of fact, he's got, here we go. At any rate, I wanted to present that to you, for you to look at that. That's, uh, the, that's the building downtown. Uh, the, uh, the attorney may want to address some of the terms of this agreement with you, but, uh, if you have any questions with that, we're actually trying to do this whole project without using, uh, property tax dollars. And so, we've worked out, uh, some details, uh, that, that it will be owner financed, so we, because you won't have enough money in your Pot One to, to totally buy this project to begin with, so we've worked out some owner financing. And Jeremy, if you want to add any more details to that, that I'm missing for the Board.
On four eighteen, Cecil Costin?
Yes.
Commissioners, um, the proposed terms of the agreement, uh, there's forty-five day feasibility, so the county can obviously make sure it meets the needs that you all need the facility for and the property, um, but the proposed purchase terms are one point one million that you have in front of you. The county would then be required to put ten thousand dollars in earnest money down on the property, um, and then following that, there would be a financing aspect over several years at three point seven five percent. That would be a seller-owner finance, so the owner would hold the first money mortgage on the property, and the county would then pay down the remaining balance of that over three years with, uh, them carrying that note on the property, so that the county can then secure the additional future-year funds to pay off that balance of the facility. The first year, and I don't have in front of me, you each have a copy of it, but I believe it's five hundred thousand, uh, at closing, which I believe is proposed to be June first, after the grant process goes through, and Mr. Jaeger and administrative staff can go through with Langton and Associates and make sure they go through the proper, Treasury requirements, grant applications, and after they have that vetted, that they would then purchase the property and be required to put the first five hundred thousand down on that facility. Any other questions I can answer on it?
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Any, any questions for the attorney, or Mr. Jaeger? Any board members?
And there, and there again, we're trying to do the best that we possibly can do. I know that the sheriff has been very patient over the years, uh, with, uh, the sheriff's office, and so this was an opportunity to actually get this thing done without trying to borrow the money and, and put the burden on the taxpayer. We can do it with, we can do it with BP grant funds.
Warren, that's also to move the nine-one-one into that building also.
And, and the dispatch.
Okay.
So, all of it. Now, we'll have to, uh, the monies that, that we'll be able to spend on this will be for acquisition with, uh, with, uh, BP funds. There probably will be some, some monies that we have to come up with to do some, uh, wiring, that we've, we've looked at the building, we've walked through the building, it's in very good shape, so we don't think there'll be any type of, uh, updates there, but there will probably be some wiring and some different things to, to do that. We'll have to come up with a few dollars to do that. So, we'll, we'll come back with you with, with a report on what it'll take. And so, I think probably what we need is a motion on this to move forward with this particular contract.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jaeger had secured your authorization and, and direction prior to the holidays to move forward to acquire the property. What we need today is really an authorizing vote of the Board to ratify the contract, move forward with the feasibility period for the month and a half, authorize Mr. Butler to sign, and, uh, also, Ms. Norris, to issue the earnest money deposit to be held against the property while we move towards closing.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. I entertain a motion to, uh, move forward this purchase.
A move.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further, uh, board discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, you and I have been working on this project for quite a while, along with other board members and members here. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no way we could go out, purchase a piece of ground, prep it, and build a building to house the sheriff and all of his staff. There's no way. We're getting this for dime on the dollar, and we're just foolish not to move forward with this. It's a good, it has everything he needs. It has conference room, it has, uh, and for all of it, it's the old bank building. I don't know if, used to, there was a Weewall Bank, and a Saint Joe Bank, and now then there's banks and banks, but anyway, it's located right downtown here, put in my deal, it has all the security, everything is there. Parking lot, I don't know what it costs, just to that parking lot, if we came from the ground up, so. I'm all for this, and I know the sheriff's been very patient. He's been very cramped, he has people scattered in different areas, and it'll put it all under one roof, and it'll be a great asset, not only for this community, but for the entire county. I just wanted to-
Sir, thank-
Comment.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not to take advantage of this.
Any other, other board discussion on it? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Anyone? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only other thing, uh, was another acquisition project that y'all had, uh, approved in December for us to go out and see what we could do with it. It's also another project that will be purchased through the, uh, Pot One, and it's in your Pot One, uh, plan that you will advertise, and, and it's the Lower Landing, uh, in, in the Howard's Creek area, and I'll, let me give these to you. Uh, this is another one that you will not have enough money in Pot One to do this in one year, so, uh, when y'all gave us, uh, the staff permission to go ahead and proceed with seeing what we could do with this particular parcel, this is gonna be, uh, this is gonna be another one that's funded through, uh, a multi-year task, uh, to make sure that we don't expend, uh, property tax dollars on this, that this all comes out of, out of your Pot One funds also. So, this is a multi-year, and I think it's two or three years, uh, Mr. Attorney.
Additional two years, sir.
Yeah, okay. And so, that's, uh, uh, that's the contract on that particular one, and I think we'll need the same motion to proceed with that, um, all of this pending, that, that you can use your Pot One funds on the, on this, on this project.
Okay. Alright. Let me say this before we, uh, we entertain a motion, uh, on the, on the Lower Landing. I'm, I'm going to, when we, when we get the motion, I'm gonna abstain from this, uh, from the motion. I reviewed it and discussed it, uh, with the attorney, and, uh, I feel I have a conflict of, uh, with the parties involved, so when the vote come, I, I will abstain, but I'm gonna ask that, uh, uh, if we, if we don't, if we can, let's, uh, let's get a second appraisal on it also, before we move forward. I mean, while we're moving forward, let's get a second appraisal, just to be, make sure we cover ourselves also.
Okay.
So, I entertain a motion to, uh, move forward.
I'll make a motion, uh, and you wanna put that about the appraisal?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm fine with that. If you wanna, uh, get a second appraisal.
So, motion by Commissioner McCrone.
I'll second him.
Second by Mr. Rich. Any, uh, any opposition to the motion? And I'm gonna abstain from this motion. Any, uh, further, further board discussion? Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public on, on this issue, Lower Landing? No opposition to the motion? Motion passes four and oh with one.
Okay, and I will proceed with, uh, we didn't have but one commercial appraiser when we did this appraisal of this particular property, so I'll, I'll proceed with finding a, a, another commercial appraiser-
Yes, sir.
-to do, to do the second appraisal.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, can I ask a question? I understand the motion is to proceed, the clerk to issue the earnest money, authorize Mr. Butler to sign, and for me to include a condition in the contract-
Yes, sir.
-that is subject to a second appraisal-
Yes, sir.
-within that, say, month and a half window of initial review.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Still have the floor, Mr. Jaeger.
Chairman, if I could, while, while Mr. Jaeger's still up, we, we, uh, for the, for the Board to be able to present everything we've been doing, feels like we've been running the circus for the last year, uh, working on some of these things, some of them have confidentiality agreements, uh, most of them do, we have not been able to adequately, uh, inform the public of all the good things that are on the horizon. We would like to have, uh, as soon as possible, but certainly before, maybe a workshop or special meeting, before the next county commission meeting, to lay out, uh, the groundwork, we should have the final framework for our agreement with Saint Joe and, and, and Eastern on the, on that first JPA agreement, and give timelines for when jobs will start showing up, and, uh, and there's some, certainly some exciting things on the horizon for, for good jobs and good number of jobs. So, uh, between, uh, Mr. Jaeger and, and our grant consultant and, and the attorney, to lay out the, the timeline of, if this happens, this is what's gonna happen going forward. So, we would like to do that, uh, hopefully before your next regular meeting, and we'll, we'll be asking you to call that-
Yes, sir.
-when we get a firm date.
Yes, sir. We got one more on this, Jaeger. Uh, what about the, uh, we need, we got to, uh, move forward the welding program? We didn't get a-
We actually, y, y, you actually had already approved that welding program.
Okay, that was wild, okay.
So, where we're at right now is, uh, once we advertise this NYPD, that welding program's in there, we'll immediately start the grant process for that particular program, and, and these other two that you, you've proceeded with. So, even before you get your plan approved, our, our consultant will start working, and we will start working towards getting those grants, uh, applied for, so we can get the funding for that as soon as the plan's approved.
Alright, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Are we down to number 11?
Mr. Chairman, I can take that. Working with Bruce May at Holland and Knight, the attorney for the utilities, Lighthouse Utilities, they've requested some additional time to assemble more information to provide to the commission, so they asked that they table the matter until the next month, or until further notice. But I've been in discussion with Mr. May and the representatives, and we'll come back at a later date when they request to be on the agenda again.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Motion to table item 11, public hearing on Lighthouse Utilities.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner McCrone, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public? Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There's one other thing that I just saw that I missed real quick.
Yes, sir.
As y'all know, the pot three, the consortium pot, I've served on that consortium for, since 2012, since it was initiated. I've been the vice chair for the last three years. We have, we're having to run again next, next month through, it's, it's a consortium of the 23 counties. They've asked me to serve again as vice chair and run again as vice chair. I need to get your approval, so if the board will, just give me approval to run for that vice chair of the consortium. I forgot about that.
Motion to allow Mr. Jaeger to move forward. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public? Any opposition? Motion passes 5-0. All right. All right, moving on down to number 12, bid review and award. And we turn that over to Mr. Butler.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have those. I'm gonna give you a handout.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the handout I gave you will cover two of those three items on number 12. And if I take the first one, one of those food supplies and commodity providers, it's not on the handout I gave you, so we can talk about it. We received two proposals, one from Durin Figewiggly and one from Richie's IGA pursuant to the request the board made for proposals. Review those, both are qualified, qualified providers. Recommendation that the board allow us to continue. We, we've been purchasing both of these firms for the last 40 and 60 years, but for us to continue to purchase from those.
Okay. Yeah, we're gonna have to wait, 'cause we, we gonna need, uh...
Pre-asking vote.
Yeah, 'cause we got, we got a couple guys that got abstained, so...
Mr. Chairman, as I understand it, we have two abstentions from the particular issue. You have established a quorum, so if they abstain and you move forward and carry a motion, you have a majority of the quorum to pass that action. All right, you have the, Mr. McDaniel back.
Sorry about that, Joe. I could've dragged it. We need a motion?
Yes, sir, we need a motion.
So move.
So we got a motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Uh, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public? All right. Any opposition to the motion?
I'm gonna have to abstain.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just, it's, it's standard procedure, you guys have, commissioners have abstentions from time to time under Florida statute in Form 9. The commissioners are required to state the abstention and the nature of the conflict. As I understand it, both commissioners have familial ties to the established businesses that submitted under RFQ. They will fill out the Florida Form 9, and if that's correct, commissioners, if you can just affirm that that is the conflict, and then the commission can move forward with the, considering the motion.
Who we have to fill out again, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Rogers, go ahead, and you can state your conflict. Yeah. Marital status. All right, Mr. Rich.
Family-owned business.
Good. All right, so we had a, had a motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner McDaniel, with two abstentions. Motion passes 3-0. All right, Mr. Butler?
Mr. Chairman, the hand, I think on that one, Mr. Attorney, do we need to go ahead and handle another one, or do you wanna talk about the AC?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. While we're on the Florida Form, there's two issues. As you recall, in the past, we have volunteers that serve on your advisory boards for the county. In the last couple of months, we've asked for you to give us approval on various local businesses that serve on your EDC, your TDC, your PDRB, but they also have businesses in the community that the county does business with. Florida statute requires them to fill out a Florida Form A for you all to consider their request to continue to provide business services to the county. We've gone from appraisal services to Mr. Ramsey's printing business, to Ms. Patty Fisher, I just go down the line. Most of your advisory board members own businesses in Gulf County, and they wanna continue to volunteer for the county, but we need to have you take that formal step to approve and do that. We have another one, the mayor, Mr. Beau Patterson, Beau knows pest control, provides some spray services for the county, but we'd request, first issue is that you approve him to continue to provide those services. He'll fill out the Florida Form A, and he'll be able to continue to volunteer his services to the county. But I'd ask the chairman to entertain any public comment and then authorize a vote for him to continue to serve and also provide those services.
All right. Any public comment on allowing Mr. Beau knows to continue work for county? Any public comment? All right, if no public comment, I entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by, motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Mr. Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion? Anyone from the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. The second item, as I've stated in the previous meetings, we're taking care of each of these. The commission, as a body, voted to move forward on the commodities and groceries issue to address the statutory issue we have with conflicts. Those commissioners have abstained from the votes. We've gone through the standard process called for by the statute to advertise qualifications to provide a particular service, and they abstained. Along those lines, I, I know each of you commissioners are proud business owners or work for proud businesses in Gulf County, and we have another issue that's come up. We rotate in the county and servicing heating and cooling systems throughout the county, and our Commissioner McCrone obviously works in that field as well. I'd ask for the commission for direction if we were to also advertise that, and for permission for the staff to advertise a request for qualifications, so we could qualify certain vendors in the county or outside the county that wish to provide heating and cooling services and HVAC maintenance in the future. I know Commissioner McCrone, prior to being on this board, did that, as the other commissioners provide services. The way to go through it with the statute is for the commissioner, obviously, to abstain, and the commission to give us direction to go out and advertise, and then we will come back with Mr. Butler's recommendations and Mr. Hammond's as to qualified vendors who can provide those services, and then they would go on a rotation schedule through the county administrative staff. And I'd answer any questions on, along those regards.
All right, any questions for Mr. Novak, reference to this issue? So we need a motion to, uh...
Mr. Chairman, turn this thing on.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure if I need to mention at, at this point for disclosure.
No, ma'am, 'cause you're not part of the elected body that'll make the action, so you don't, but when, if there is a submission in the future, that, that could be placed on that paperwork.
I'll do it at that time, okay, thank you, thank you for that.
And I can explain, if we want to do it real quick. We had a, we had a freezer go out at the jail two weeks ago, had four, five thousand dollars worth of stuff in it. We, they, the staff immediately called Mr. McCrone's business, who told them they had a conflict. They next called someone else who works for the county who has a conflict. So we had, we had a crisis, so we had to sign an emergency declaration that, that we, you know, had to have it. But we, we need to be able to do business with local vendors, and we need to go through the proper procedures to do that. So that's, that's what we wanna do, for all the local vendors that, that would potentially have a conflict.
And I suggest we have two or three, because...
That's exactly right.
Some of them might be tied up, and you have a backup contingency plan there.
Got you. Got you. So we do, we need a motion to move that forward? Gotta get a motion, entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second, Mr. Chairman. I abstain.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel?
Yes.
Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes 4 and over one abstention. All right, Mr. Butler, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, this, it's on the agenda, but just for the record, that was to do with the food supplies and commodity providers, that was bid number 1718-07. That's one I want to put in front of you, is, it's on the handout. It is 1718-08, Consulting and Engineering Inspection Services. And 09, 1718-09, floating dry dock design engineering services. First one being 1718-08, Consulting, Engineering, Inspection Oversight Services. I'm recommending that you award this to the highest-ranked bidder. And what we did, the committee took and ranked the two bidders, one and two, and some were better in some areas than others, but, um, one and two. The number one for consulting and engineering inspection oversight services is Dewberry, number two is Technology Associates, Inc. That's on 1718-08. Recommendation is that you award that to them. And this is for the, the dry dock project at the Old Millsite area.
So I got a recommendation by Mr. Butler for the consulting and engineering inspection oversight services, that we go with the highest bidder, well, not the highest bidder, but the number one ranked, um, number one ranked corporation, that is Dewberry. Can I get a motion on?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second, sir.
Second by Mr. Rich. Any further board discussion?
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What's the difference between the two engineering?
He owned that, own inspection services.
Right, what the first one?
Yeah, Dewberry. Dewberry, they proposed like TAI did, and they, they had, they had certain things they had to present to us, I believe about a dozen different things they had to submit.
Okay.
And based on that supplemental, they...
Both, both of these to do with the floating dry dock? I guess what I'm...
Both of these, the first one we're talking about is gonna be the inspection services, and the second one's gonna be the actual engineering of the floating dry dock.
The design?
Design.
Okay, okay, okay.
So the first one would be actually the inspection of the design.
Okay, that's fine.
To build different engineer.
Okay.
Any more board, uh, board discussion? Anyone in the public on consulting and engineering inspection oversight services? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, next one is 1718-09, floating dry dock design engineering service. We received two proposals, two. We had particular criteria to go through to determine which one was the best. The, the number one ranked proposal was Hegger, H-E-G-E-R, Dry Dock, Inc. And then number two was TAI, Technology Associates, Inc. Recommendation is for the board to award to Hegger Dry Dock, Inc., for the engineering and design of the floating dry dock for the Eastern Marine Project.
Okay. We got a recommendation by Mr. Butler that we go with number one, Hegger Dry Dock, Inc., the consulting, I'm sorry, the floating dry dock design and engineering services. Can I get a motion?
So move. Second.
We had a motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Mr. Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on, on this issue? Anyone in the public on floating dry dock design and engineering services? Anyone in the public? Any opposition? Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, on each of those two, what we need to do, we'll, we'll get with both number one ranked firms, sit down, we negotiate with them, and make sure we end the money.
Yes, sir.
In any event that we cannot come to an agreement on the amount of money, we'll come back to you.
Yes, sir.
And ask you to go to number two.
Yes, sir.
But, um, we, we'll make an attempt on number one on each one of those two items. If we can't get there, we'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. All right. Man, we gonna take a little, a change right here.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one more thing on that issue?
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Hammond?
Uh, we just need to recognize, we need to recognize, we're gonna pay for any of these fees that are paid, or design fees and inspection fees, out of that DOT JPA that, that we signed in, in December. So that, those funds will be paid for out of that JPA. Just need to have that stated.
Okay. It's coming out of JPA, okay. Good, good, all right. At this time, I'm gonna recognize, uh, Mr. Joe, is that, Rosie? Am I right?
Yes, sir.
ARPC style. Give your name, state your name and who you represent for the, for the record, please.
Good morning, I'm Joe Crozier. I work for the Appalachian Regional Planning Council. Commissioner McDaniel's on our board, and so this young man, he let me speak this morning on a little late notice. We're hosting a conference at the Florida State University Stadium in March, on the 14th, 15th, and 16th. We reserved 20 spots for any of the Rye Perion County Commission, whether it's someone on the commission or someone that they designate. So this conference is for the Apalachicola River and Bay. So we've invited, and we have people speaking from the Corps, from the Water Management District, DEP, NOAA, a lot of different agencies, federal, around the country and, and locally. But on the third day is when we think it'd be most helpful if anyone would like to come. We're gonna be talking about a lot of the economics and legal updates, transboundary coordination, drought management, all that kinda stuff. So if anyone wants to come, just, just let me know later on, you, you have plenty of time, but, and, and I'm the coordinator for the Rye Perion County Stakeholder Coalition too, so, so you guys give, you give $5,000 every year for us to, to work with the Apalachicola, Chattahoochee Flint stakeholders. One of our bigger projects right now is, other than this conference, is a drought management program with, with NOAA, and how to equally allocate water. And some of our members were subpoenaed this month, actually, to, to talk about what's going on in Atlanta. So if anyone has any questions about the conference or any of those legal updates, I can answer them now if, if anyone has any interest.
Any, any questions for us?
Joe, you said that'll be at Campbell Stadium, Bobby Bowden Field.
Mm-hmm. Not on the field. We'll actually be...
I'm on the field.
We'll be inside. But, and also on Friday afternoon, the Riverkeeper will be doing a boat trip, if anyone wants to go on that. And you'll have an opportunity to speak with, with the Corps, the Water Management District, whoever, whoever you want. So, yeah, just let me your word if you could channel that to me.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. I think we down to number 13. We will hit your courthouse.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know we have a, a lot on your agenda, and we're trying to address them all. I just wanted to, if I can, before we address the We-Wall Courthouse, is to go back to number 12. We had the food supplies and commodities providers RFQ and recommendation, and you heard Mr. Hammond speak about, you know, putting out the fires as they come out. Since your last meeting on December 12th, obviously over the holidays, there's a requirement or to feed both your inmates and address various county commodities issues. So I'd ask the commission to authorize Ms. Herring and Ms. Norris to approve invoices that were received from any commodity providers that might be conflicted by our current commission, and I'd ask the commission to, commissioners that it applies to, to abstain from that vote, but we need approval to move forward and pay those invoices, whether it be a holiday invoice or the, you know, purchases from December 12th to today, January 23rd.
Yes, sir. So can I get a motion to move forward to go ahead on and pay those, those invoices?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this issue? Any opposition to the motion? We got two abstentions?
Yes.
Yes, stated for the record. Any opposition to the motion? We got two abstentions?
Yes.
They, yes, stated for the record.
Family business.
I'll abstain, family contact. Motion passes three and oh with two abstentions.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank you Commissioners. I, I hope that's the last time I have to ask you about that and I appreciate your cooperation. Um, Mr. Chairman, the next item that you had addressed is number thirteen. And working with Commissioner Rich and Commissioner McDaniel, um, they had received correspondence prior to the holiday uh, with regards to North Florida Child Development. And their ongoing occupancy of the Weewah Courthouse going back to two thousand. Um, I know that uh, over the years, um, Ms. Gaskin has come before you all. They've done, uh, they employ, I think about fifteen employees and um, have done significant improvements to the courthouse in Weewah Hitchka. Um, the correspondence that the Commission received and has discussed individually with some of the Commissioners is their uh, request now to take it, an additional step. And some of the things are increased square footage to include the second floor, um, meeting uh, several ADA requirements and working on the elevator access. Uh, creating some fenced storage areas um, behind the building adjacent to North Third Street. Um, also uh, an ability to grant permission and access to visitors for the historical courtroom on the second floor that the county had um, renovated many years ago. Um, and in those discussions and dialogue, and I've, I've discussed with Ms. Gaskin and uh, Mr. Thompson who are here today. Is that they had requested several years ago that the county consider possible conveyance of that courthouse to enable them to secure additional grant funds. Um, I just, reporting to this Commission, previous Commissioners and Commission bodies had uh, discussed with the city of Weewah Hitchka if they were en- entertain. Uh, consideration of conveying that property over to them. They had indicated in the past that that was not something that they were open to. Um, we've received this correspondence from Ms. Gaskin. I know she's here, she wants to obviously come up and answer any questions. But the request today is that there be a new consideration for the conveyance of that historical courthouse to North Florida Child Development. Um, some of the terms that have been discussed, I believe with Commissioner McDaniel individually, uh, Commissioner Rich that I've had the discussions with. Also with Ms. Gaskin is that there be several conditions that if the property was ever not used by North Florida Child Development or conveyed out in the future. That would revert back to the county first and foremost. Um, two additional uh, conditions of a possible land donation agreement would be that there would always be continuous uh, employment. I know Ms. Gaskin is very proud of the jobs that they have in Weewah Hitchka. And one of the conditions with the county would be that there would be a requirement to maintain those jobs and unemployment in the courthouse. And ideally with the improvements that they would expand and obviously hire more folks once they increase the square footage. Um, and then the third uh, condition that we've discussed up to this point to report to the Commission and the public. Is that the county would continue to have access to that courthouse, that historic courthouse on the second floor. I believe it's a hundred years of history in Gulf County, and I know there's a lot of folks that are proud of that courtroom. Um, and back in the day when we had our mock trial program, I used to participate with our judge. And would have some of the high school children go up there and use it for the mock trial programs. So the county would request and require that that condition that they could use that courtroom going forward in the future. So those are the three conditions that we had discussed to the, to date. I don't know if the Commissioners or the Chairman have any questions, I'd be happy to answer what I know. And I know Ms. uh, Gaskin is here as well to hopefully uh, fill in any of the blanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. uh, Ms. Gaskin, you wanna come on up?
Sharon Gaskin, two thirty-six Old Panama Highway. And I'm the CEO of North Florida Child Development. I have a hundred employees, not just in Gulf County, but fifty percent of my operations is in Gulf County, so.
It's in the north and the south.
It is, yes, yeah.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Gaskin.
Is there anything?
And I got, any questions for Ms. Gaskin?
I want to say it was in eleven or twelve that we, we discussed some options. I, I think the consideration for closing it was what really prompted me to come forward. And um, I, I'm really excited about going after additional money to, to do the historical complete reservation, preservation of the second, of the bottom floor. Uh, the one that was abandoned that royally was in. Um, so I'm, I have barriers and that's uh, the size of the space that we're in, we need more. But more than that, um, to be the gatekeeper or the custodial and take care of that um, historical piece of information. Um, about the Weewah Hitchka area is uh, would be a privilege. So we're offering that opportunity um, to the, to the county. We would like to take that on.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Gask. Uh, any, any, any further questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Mr. McDaniel?
Sharon, thank you.
You're welcome.
So much, and uh, for those who do not know, Ms. Gaskin here is a fighter. She puts her mind to something. Better get out of the way because if she's going out of the way, she's going. But on it, there's a, ladies and gentlemen, on the more serious side. There's a lot of old history, our county history there back in the Calhoun County days. And we've had some very uh, uh, there's been some high profile trials. I'm talking more or less than the court. Now, my family, both sides occupied that courthouse anywhere from the sheriff to the judge to the uh, what? Tax collector and you name it at one time or the other. Both sides of my family, a lot of history. And I would like to say this, uh, Ms. Gaskin's father-in-law, late Mr. David C. Gaskin. He argued some very high profile cases in that courtroom along with attorneys right here in Port St. Joe. Uh, uh, Mr. uh, oh, my goodness, Mr. Carston is one of them and uh.
Fred Whitten.
But even before him, uh, goodness gracious, my mind went blank. I should have, yeah, Judge Fitzpatrick. Yeah, he was a circuit judge, not only an attorney.
Fourteen years.
Mickey Stone, Mr. Silas Stone from the old Stone family here, who helped found a lot of that into the county. We got a lot of history. And just to tie into there, the Stones. Somebody, I didn't find out recently, you always learn that Stone Mill Creek up there. It's after the Stone family from here, they have an old grist mill up there, they call it the Stone Grist Mill, so you learn something every day. But from here in, in our area, but uh, Sharon, I know you do a wonderful job with this and uh, my only request, and I don't think I'd be able, if we can. Uh, yes, you can utilize it, but we would like to maybe retain that old courtroom. But any of you that haven't been there, it's a beautiful, beautiful old courtroom. Back in the day, it's a, it's nothing like we have now, but you could seat what, a hundred plus people or more than that up there. Elevated uh, floor and all, but. And if you ever did, hopefully, as it goes on down, it, uh, North West Florida, or it may change names or whatever. But if they ever did decide to just, you know, abandon that site, that it would fall back to the people.
Certainly, and, and I want it.
That's all I have, but I appreciate everything you've done.
I, I want it to belong to the people now. Because the second phase of the historical preservation would be to memorialize the leaders of the, of the historical in the, in the community. Uh, as you spoke of Judge Fitzpatrick, um, and, and many of the um, George Corps. Um, many of the leaders that, and, and make it part of the environment as it's designed. So, and it, and, and be using it as office space and, and open it to the public too. Uh, if they need that uh, meeting room, it's a beautiful area. Um, the City Commission can have their meetings there, you could have your meetings there, um, possibly. Um, so uh, for it to be accessible would be part of it.
All right, that's good. You good?
That's good, I'm good.
Uh, any, anyone in the public with questions for Ms. uh, Ms. Gaskin? Yes, sir, come on up to the podium.
Shall I sit down?
Yeah, just slide over, Ms. Gaskin, yes, sir. State your name and your address for the record, please.
James Rich, four two nine Old Transfer Road, Weewah Hitchka.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Rich.
There's been talk about a ruin to be set aside in the old courthouse for a museum. I wanted to know whatever came of that.
I'm sorry.
A museum in the old courthouse for our local history? Is that on the platter too or not?
That's what I was just discussing.
A museum? Yes or no?
I don't know.
You don't know? I don't either. I've heard there's gonna be one, uh, we don't know. But there are some people that have a lot of things they could donate and be glad to do it if we actually did that.
Okay.
I just wanted to find out more about that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Any more questions for Ms. Ms. Gask, Board members?
Mr. Nova? Uh, Chairman, um, like I said, you, the, the Chairman McDaniel had received that written inquiry uh, prior to the holiday. I know Commissioner Rich has had discussion. Um, if there's no other questions of the Commission, I think uh, Ms. Gaskin's proposal uh, before you is a consideration of that conveyance. If you authorized and directed me, I would work on that land donation agreement and a proposed deed of conveyance if that was the will of the board. Um, and build those conditions into it, and I'd work with her and her staff over the next couple of weeks so that we could come back to you. With a, a, a formal proposal that you all could consider at your February date. Um, and obviously put on the agenda for further discussion and your consideration at that time. Um, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions you have on that request from Ms. Gaskin.
Any more, any Board members with any? I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, I'm, I'm fine with the request. Do we need a motion to?
Yes, sir, if you, if I, if there's a motion to direct staff to move and work with North Florida Child Development on those terms. And then we'll come back with something actually on paper for you at your next meeting after Ms. Gaskin and her staff and I meet.
Mr. Chairman, it'd be honored to make that motion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Be honored to second it, sir.
Also, I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, yes, ma'am. All right, moving on down to number fourteen, Samantha Willis of Next Edge Networks. Samantha Willis.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, sir.
Um, as you wait for Ms. Willis, if she's here to come forward, we see, I received correspondence yesterday inquiring if the, if they were unable to attend today. If you would still consider their proposal. Um, and i- if she's not here today, I'd like to basically summarize, I've had discussions with each of you over the past few weeks. I know some of the Commissioners um, have uh, received information from Department Heads of the request. Um, Ms. Willis works for Next Edge Networks, which is also, I believe, a subsidiary of Federated Wireless. And anything that I represent to you all is all from the information I've received in correspondence or conversations. In a nutshell, and to summarize what my individual conversations with the Department Heads and some of the Commissioners. Is that this company has proposed to uh, utilize your South Gulf Volunteer Fire Department Tower to place a transponder on it. To assist them in relaying communications from offshore, offshore vessels to help their, uh, I believe it's cellular communications. Um, they've proposed, and they've talked with our uh, Fire Director, they've spoken with some of the administrative staff. Um, I've spoken with Willis, um, I've actually reviewed the proposed agreement or lease. Um, and the proposal was seventy-five dollars a month for them to have access to place their transponder on your tower. Um, we've discussed it with them. Um, I have concerns with regards to the twenty-four hour access to your volunteer county public property, which is your volunteer fire department. Um, the business side of it is your consideration and decision whether that is something that's uh, feasible and, and, and worth your while. Uh, again, my concerns are with regards to the accessibility, liability, with regards to having something on your towers. You guys, uh, Commission have dealt with this in the past. Um, I received a later communication just this last week, I think on Friday evening, indicating if that was not doable for the county. Would you all consider placing a light post up somewhere in District Five that they could place a transponder on and then structure a lease agreement with? So those are the communications that I've received, I've had uh, discussions with them back. Um, and I put it before you because they've requested that if they did not attend today, despite being requested to be put on the agenda, that you would consider their request. So I think it goes back, I think it goes back four, four months that we've been working and, and responding to this particular vendor. Um, they've asked to be on your uh, meeting agenda prior, um, you, they're on here today. And, and if there's anything I can answer for you, I'd be happy to. There's no action required of this Commission. But if you wanted to provide me any further direction, I'd be happy to relate to them, or if they're watching right now, they can, you can provide your comments or direction to them as well.
So, so from my understanding, it's like some kind of subscription for them?
It, it's actually a lease agreement. It's a license agreement for them to utilize your tower, just as we have out on the county campus here. As for a private third company to come and utilize a space on your tower to place a, a transponder. A uh, tech, a, a piece of technology that'll relay signals from offshore vessels. Um, and like I said, if I'm not characterizing or summarizing their proposal, then I would encourage them to come do that in the future, but. That is, that is my understanding of the proposal for seventy-five dollars a month for them to use your county fire tower to place their equipment on it. And then they would pay you per month to relay those signals.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Macron.
Chairman, we would be liable for. You know, and, and, and I, I'm not forgiving anybody, twenty, you know, if not tied to the fire department, access to that building or, you know, so.
So i- 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 try to boil it down, um, the county gives people permission to do something on county property, it's a license agreement. Whenever we do something of that nature, we'll always have a hold harmless and indemnification, we'll make sure they have insurance. So we protect the county and the county taxpayers as best we can. If you give someone permission to be on a property, it's an invitation to be there, so they actually have a legal right to be there to do what they want on that tower, fix it or adjust it. If someone doesn't on county property, obviously, then you have protections under Florida statute in terms of your immunity. But this takes it to a different step, so you would actually go into business or accept this business proposal. You'd receive payment and they would have a right to go and use that. So in terms of exposure and liability, anytime you enter an agreement with a third party, there's gonna be exposure and liability with regards to that. You need to have a safe, and I know that you have your guidelines and you have your lights and you have all your insurance in place on these, this volunteer fire department. But there's considerations for the Commission, the staff, the volunteers who are all out there, you're now introducing another element to that property who has a right to be there.
You, 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 you said seventy-five hundred dollars a month, right?
No, sir, seven, seventy-five, seven-five dollars a month.
I thought, I, I figured you said seventy-five dollar, I don't think that'd cover the insurance for us, will it?
Chairman, you're not gonna get that pizza party.
Uh, any, any other board discussion on this issue? Mr. Rich?
Mr. Chairman, um, I, the only question I have is for, I guess, public safety, but with what they're trying to offer as a service, but um. I know with the recent updates to the tower out there, cell phone service is a lot better offshore. Um, so I don't think it's essential that we do that.
Okay.
Probably a liability on an asset to the, the community.
All right, I, I agree with you on, on that. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, just because you asked the question, I wanted to provide it to the Commission. I'm just sitting here reading term three, it's a rental agreement. Says for five years, upon the day of commencement, they'll make a one-time payment of forty-five hundred dollars. After that initial five years, the agreement could automatically be extended for three additional five-year terms. Um, and terminate at least two months in a notice, and the tenant will pay the landlord as consideration of the extension and annual payment. And the amount of eight hundred dollars for each one of those additional years. So all in all, this looks like a twenty-year agreement, a first five-year agreement for forty-five hundred. And then automatic three five-year renewals that they'll pay you eight hundred dollars a year for each of those additional fifteen years. That is the proposed lease agreement that they've provided to us.
Go ahead, Mr. Hammond.
The, the reason this is going for four months is because staff wouldn't agree to it. I mean, technically, the administrator could have, could have agreed to this and brought it to you, but we have a horrible experience over the last twenty-five years with people that leased space on our tower and never paid. We had to pay to pull their stuff off, it loaded our tower, all those things, so. The seventy-five dollars a month, we have wasted lots of good energy on that and staff's recommendation is to deny. That's okay.
Okay.
Just as the Commission and Chairman, I also understand, there's nothing keeping from private industry securing private land and installing private towers. And putting their transponders on that private property. This has been a request of you as a Commission on behalf of the taxpayers to put it on public property.
Okay, all right. So, so to, I know you say we don't have to make a move, a move on this day, but I mean, we can make a move to deny, right?
Yes, sir, you, yes, no, or just not respond, but whatever you, direction you provide us will relate to Ms. Willis and her company.
All right, so what is, what is the Board's recommendation?
Make a motion, we deny it.
Got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel to deny.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any other, uh, any further board discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
That's it, you have the chair?
We leave here. Rich and I, back in North End of County, there's, Sheriff, there's several towers, all on private property, all along. Close to your neighborhood, I didn't know it was up there, I saw it the other night, I don't do a lot out at night. But anyway, they can, they can find a piece of property, deal with a property owner there.
There's other towers out there.
Everywhere, this tower's from right here down this way, every direction, they're on private property.
All right, so we got a, a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner uh, Macron. All right. So we got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Crone. Anyone in the public on this issue? Any opposition? Motion to deny passes five and oh. All right, Ms., moving on down to item number fifteen. Ms. Diana Burkett.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I spoke to Ms. Burkett this week and she has asked to be on next month's agenda for this item.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Moving right along. Number sixteen. Mr. Jonathan Brucker, St. Joseph Bay Aquatic Preserve.
Mr. Brucker. Answer. Good morning, gentlemen. I came here about six months ago to let you guys know about our seagrass restoration program that's going on in St. Joe Bay.
Hold on one second, Mr. Jonathan. State your name and record for the.
Jonathan Brucker, St. Joseph Bay, Aquatic Preserve Manager. We're the ones who are managing the shallow seagrass buoy system in the southern end of the bay. We have kiosks regarding the system at Frank Pate, the Peninsula State Park and at Presnell's. Just as an update, in the last few months, we've replaced eleven of the downed buoys that have been downed for a while. We bought new buoys, new poles, and so far, they're all still standing straight, which is a bonus. And to let you guys know that if you see a little plane flying around over the bay, we're starting to do our mapping of the entire seagrass community in the entire bay. So all permits and everything have been acquired for that, so don't panic. It's just a part of the mapping. And as soon as we get the imagery, we'll be working with contractors to restore two acres of prop scars in the bay. So I plan on coming back as we get further along in the project, show you guys some of the imagery that we're getting. We've also just installed a brand-new seagrass sign at Frank Pate. It's a scars hurt sign. It's a part of the Bee Seagrass Safe Campaign through Sea Grant and the University of Florida. And it's just to magnify the efforts that we're doing in seagrass protection in the bay. So just wanted to give a quick update. I appreciate the time. If you guys have any questions, my contact info is on the back of that brochure. I'm available all the time, so I appreciate your time today. I don't know if you guys have any questions now, but.
Any questions?
You had a great opportunity during the cold weather because it was extremely low tide.
Yeah, we were out there. Our guys are flying out there right now. Just the winds make it a little difficult right now to fly those little planes. The plane is, you know, six-foot wingspan, but only weighs seven pounds. But it flies at, you know, seventy miles an hour, so we're covering three hundred acres a day. So we're doing what we can, but it's tough to get around when there's no water.
Any more, any more questions?
Yeah, I have one, Mr. Chairman. Tell me about the turtle population out there. I've talked to some of the people on around down in that area and they said St. Joe Bay was abundantly supplied with turtles.
Yep.
And they were doing damage to possibly some of the grass. Now, I don't know.
No, I mean, that's not true. The turtles naturally exist out there.
But there is an abundance of turtles in St. Joe Bay.
Yep. The southern end of the bay, we do get a lot of turtles, juvenile and adult. We do encounter them a lot. And just recently with the cold weather, there was over three hundred cold-stunned turtles that were, you know, found on the shorelines that have been rehabbed in Gulf World and they've been re-released. So we have a very active volunteer community with the state park, with the friends groups around with the state parks, the Buffer Preserve and us. So they are out there and they are abundant. They're just less visible in the wintertime when it's colder. They are out there.
Jonathan, I've always seen a few in the bay. I've been here all my life. But I mean, I'm talking to fishermen now. They're telling me five to seven hundred at any time, you know.
Yeah, I mean, on a good day when we're out taking water samples and we're in the southern end of the bay, I mean, you can see a turtle, you know, poking out of the water. I mean, just as far as, I just, I mean, all the time you see them just coming up for air and diving down.
Like a herd of cattle, you know, I mean.
Maybe.
Yeah.
But they're out there, so.
Sixteen hundred cold-stunned just three or four years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So just in that, you know, three, four-day period last week, there were three hundred.
I know, you know, I've been in that bay all my life and used to, you might see ten all day long. You know, these guys are telling me they're seeing five, seven hundred turtles a day, you know, just.
Yep.
What has changed, you know?
I mean, it's a viable turtle habitat. The seagrass is a place for them to stop over and rest to develop as juveniles, but they also eat the grass. And so the healthier the seagrass, the more we're going to see them down there. And that southern end, there is a very healthy seagrass population.
Do they eat the seagrass? Do they eat the roots and all?
They tend to eat it down to the roots.
Would that have an impact? I mean, if you went from, I mean, I'm not.
It's a natural thing for them to eat the grass. It's kind of like a cow eating grass. They'll eat it down to the roots and then it'll grow.
And they'll wipe out, you know, if you don't move cattle, they'll wipe out a section of, you know.
Well, the turtles will move with the grass as well, you know what I mean? Turtles will move where the grass is, but.
I'm just, you know, I just, I've never seen that many. I've been here all my life and I've never seen, you know, you'd see ten, maybe twenty turtles in a day. And they're saying five to seven hundred, you know, you know.
Well, give me a call when it's warmer. We'll take you out with us.
I'd be glad to. Okay.
Absolutely. Once it's warmer, because it's not as much fun in the cold.
Okay.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, guys.
All right. Before we move down to Mr. Rich here, the chair's going to call.